I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. I would like to call to order the Board of Education meeting for Twinsburg for Wednesday, September 17th, 2014. Mr. Aho, would you please call the rule?
Mr. Stuber?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
And Mrs. Turl Waldron and Mrs. Kane-Criswell are absent this evening.
They are both traveling tonight, so if I could ask everyone to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, good evening, and thanks to everyone for attending. We're now four weeks into the school year, and there's many positive things to note tonight. I'm going to highlight a few, and then if you can stay through at least the first part of the meeting, there's some really great things that our administrators are going to talk about. Tonight, we're going to receive an update early in the meeting from Mr. Steve Noble regarding the PAWS on Hunger Program. The PAWS on Hunger Program is a partnership between the Twinsburg Schools and the Emergency Assistance Center of Northfield. The PAWS program is also referred to as a backpack program that provides supplemental food items to students in need. With the assistance from community members such as Mr. Noble, our teachers, the PTA, local businesses, and other community volunteers, the PAWS program is expanding its reach to combat hunger, and we'll hear more about that from Mr. Noble in a few minutes. Also during our administrative reports tonight, Mrs. Farthing will provide two reports. The first that we'll receive is an update on college and career readiness incentives, and then after that, Mrs. Farthing is going to provide an overview of the state of Ohio local report card for the Twinsburg School District. And while our staff will continue to focus attention on areas that can be improved, it's a very positive report card for Twinsburg. The performance index score of 106.651 is the highest score that Twinsburg has ever achieved. This score ranks our district at number 67 out of 881 districts reported, and this is up from 101 last year. Our district met all 24 out of 24 indicators and thus received an A rating, and there's many, many more positives to note, and I'm going to stop right there and defer to the administrative report where Mrs. Powers and Mrs. Farthing can provide the rest of the good news during that report. However, I do want to make one important note about the success of this report card because it's a reflection of the dedication of our teaching staff and our administrators, and also this could not be possible without the hard work of our students, the parents, and the community in general. I also want to acknowledge that the Twinsburg School District has just released a quality profile, and it looks like this. This quality profile is something that was designed through collaboration of over 50 districts across the state, and it's a comprehensive report that provides the community with additional accountability measures that better define a high-quality education and are not necessarily included in the state's report card. The content of the quality profile includes academics, arts, student leadership and activities, fiscal stewardship, parent and community involvement, and student services. The format of this report includes information that community members from member districts identified as factors that are important to them when it comes to identifying a quality educational environment. Again, Mrs. Powers will speak more about this quality profile and how it will be made available to the community, but I do want to take a moment to thank Mrs. Powers for her leadership in the effort for this work. This was a collaborative effort with many districts across the state, and I want to say thank you to Mrs. Powers for your hard work to pull this together. And finally, I want to acknowledge a few students. There are three national merit semifinalists at our high school, and I believe we're going to see them here at the next meeting, but I'm going to mention them tonight. The first is Shayla Gohler, who is the daughter of Valerie Lindstrom, Nihah Sharma, who is the daughter of Pramud and Vandana Sharma, and Abby Williamson, the daughter of Jerry and Denise Williamson. On behalf of the Board of Education, our sincere congratulations on this very important accomplishment to these three seniors at Twinsburg High School. And tonight, a very special welcome to the staff, students, and families who are here from Wilcox, Dodge, and the Twinsburg High School. I know you're here tonight for some very special recognitions, so without further delay, I would like to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Powers for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Stuber. Good evening, Board of Education, families, community members, students, staff. Thank you for being here. It has been a very exciting couple of days in our school district. I was telling some of the kids when I saw them at an athletic event recently that even the administrators at the board office were doing the happy dance on Friday when our report card results came in because our kids really performed very well, and I wanted to, I know, Mr. Stuber, you said a couple of things, but I'm going to have to continue on with what you said.
Please.
These kinds of results only happen because we have tremendous students, we have a truly supportive community, and we have awesome staff members that support our kids every single day. So if I can just highlight some of the big things on our report card, and Mrs. Farthing will delve a little bit deeper when she presents in a few moments. As Mr. Stuber indicated, the district's overall performance index of 106.651 is tied at number 67 in the state for all school districts and community schools being reported. This is a tremendous gain from last school year where we ranked 101. And in our world, that is a tremendous effort, and for our kids to perform at that level and be able to improve on already great scores, that is a tremendous effort by every one of our students. The district's overall performance index is 106.651, which equates to a B. Last year, our overall performance index was 105, which was also a B. Please note that the 106.651 is the highest performance index score that our school district has ever earned. In order to get an A in this area, you have to score at 112. So we're at 106.651. We're pretty close. We have some work to do, but that's really something to be proud of. Our school district, our kids have met 100% of all indicators, which equals an A. Our gap closing overall score is a B. Our graduation rates for our four-year cohort is an A, and the five-year cohort is also an A. And our progress, or also called value-added, our district overall rating is an A. Our district's value-added scores are ranked at number 72 in the entire state as compared to all other districts and community schools, and that's a growth gain of 8.87. This is compared to last year's rating at 173 with a growth gain of 5.43. Tremendous gain from all of our students. And this is the big news, and I was disappointed that the media didn't pick up on this one. Our gifted students ranked number three in the state. Number three in the state for value-added. That is tremendous, and that just shows that we are pushing our kids. They're growing phenomenally, and we surely do thank our parents and our phenomenal staff for making this happen every day. To be number three in the state, do you realize what that is? That is huge, and like I said, in my world, that's like winning the Olympic gold. So we are just seriously so delighted with the results of our kids. As Mr. Stuber indicated, we have room to grow. We have some work to be done, and there are some areas on our report card that we know need to be better, and that's okay because those are goals that we've set for ourselves. We'll continue to do our work, continue to help our kids really analyze all the performance data to make sure that we're drilling down where instruction has to happen every single day in our classrooms. And we like to say that we know every child's story, and that's what it's about, making sure as a staff, we understand what students need to grow, where they are academically, where their social needs happen to be, and then to make it happen with the support of our families and our community. So congratulations to our kids. It's really all about you, but we really want to thank our staff, and we want to thank our parents and the community because without your support, this absolutely wouldn't happen. So thank you for all of that. So that was first happy news, and then our quality profile was published. We were at a meeting, Mr. Aho and Mr. Welker and I, last week with a person who is a businessman, and he said one of the things that public schools don't do a very good job on is telling their own story. We let the media tell our story. We let other people tell our story, and usually when we're in the news, public school districts as a whole, it's about a student who made a mistake or some district administrator who didn't do something right, and we don't do enough about telling our own story. And so through the work of the Alliance for High Quality Education, I'm a member on the executive board of that committee, we decided that we were going to tell our own story. And so 50 school districts across the state worked with their administrative teams and collaboratively worked amongst each other to now publish our quality profiles. This is the true story, a great picture about the Twinsburg City School District from the 2013-14 school year, and members of our community should have received this in the Twinsburg Bulletin as an insert today or tomorrow when you receive that in your mail. I get mine on my driveway. I don't know about you, but so if you don't receive a copy of this and you are interested in receiving a copy, we have plenty of extras at the board office. I hope you're as impressed with our school district as I am because this really does tell the story about all the great things happening in our classrooms, the support of many of our booster organizations is included in here, and our financial stewardship that's led by Mr. Aho, and the fact that we believe that our parents and our community is so supportive, and we thank you so very much for being supportive because of that support, we're able to do so many great things for our kids. So I hope you get a chance to really look at this. I am really proud of this one, and we look forward to spreading some good news about our school district, starting with these scores from last week. So wait till you see next year's profile if you think this one's good.
The community will see that tomorrow.
And in the Twinsburg Bulletin, it's also available off a link on our website, on our homepage. Just click on the link, and you can actually also see it electronically. So that's also great news. As Mr. Stuber indicated this evening, Mrs. Farthing is going to make two presentations. She loves leadership opportunities like this. She's going to talk about college and career readiness programs, and she's also going to give the bigger picture about our district report cards, so we'll get to that in one moment. But as Mr. Stuber indicated, we do have a very important guest with us this evening. Mr. Steve Noble is a parent in our community. He lives here in town. He's a business owner in town, and about a year and a half ago, I had the great pleasure of meeting him at the Emergency Assistance Center. Mr. Noble is very much committed to making sure that kids who are hungry, who come to school here, have some healthy snacks, and he was the force behind us creating this PAWS on Hunger program. Through the partnership that our school district has with our PTAs and with the Emergency Assistance Center, we have now been able to grow the program from Wilcox Primary School last year to now this year also Samuel Bissell Elementary School. So I've asked Mr. Noble to come this evening and to present to our board a little bit of an update as to where our program has been and where it's going and what's on the horizon for this really important initiative that we have in our school district. Welcome, Mr. Noble.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me back. It was about a year ago or thereabouts I was hearing from you for the first time talking about this idea I had about the PAWS on Hunger program, what we, it's kind of a misnomer calling it a backpack program. We actually don't give the kids backpacks. We distribute food to them discreetly on Friday afternoons. No one knows they're getting it. It's the teachers place it in their backpacks at a time when the kids are in class. I had no idea it was going to work as well as it did, but it has. As Mrs. Powers indicated, we rolled it out at Bissell this year, which is just fabulous. I do want to take a moment of privilege to share something I just learned a few hours ago. Pioneer Presbyterian up in Solon helped cover the expenses of the program last February. It was my church, and I got word today that Charlie Ackert died, and Charlie was a member of the church for many, many years, and his wife Krista was a refugee in Germany after World War II, and she knew a lot about hunger. And I preached at Pioneer on Bread for the World Sunday, and we did the offering of letters, and Krista wrote a letter about her experiences to Rob Portman, what it's like to grow up hungry. It was very meaningful to me, but what's more meaningful to me is that I read in the notice that came from Pioneer that they have asked that move flowers, any memorials be donated to the PAWS program. It's probably more important to also mention that the Ackerts are from Solon. They are not from Twinsburg, but they know the value of what the PAWS program is for the children that are hungry in this community, and with mentioning that, I just hold Charlie dear to my heart and thank the family. I am, obviously, I'm a businessman. I've been here, actually, in Twinsburg over 20 years, and I have two kids in the system. Delighted tonight because Mrs. Fink is here, who is my son's first grade teacher, and I'm just going to take a moment just to tell you she was absolutely fabulous. There are perhaps 16 million kids in this country that are hungry right now, about one in five, which makes no sense to me in the most powerful, wealthiest nation on earth. It just boggles my mind that we have this problem, but we do. Twinsburg has a hunger problem too, and the problem with hunger is that it's invisible. You don't see it, but the teachers do. When you have 20% of your classroom that might have a grumbling stomach on a Monday morning, you have a problem because a lot of times you're competing against hunger for their attention. That affects all of us because it's our, those of us that are as lucky as my family is to be as privileged as we are, not having to worry about hunger, but our kids are sitting in classrooms with kids that can't concentrate, and that slows down everybody. Couple of years ago, I got the idea for the backpack program and came to Mrs. Powers and Mrs. Villa, found out that we were, I think at Wilcox at the time, about 18.3% of all the children there were on free and reduced lunch. Talked about the idea, what they thought, and Mrs. Villa said she thought it'd be an excellent idea, and I started doing a little bit more research. I thought, you know, if I could get you a machine that we could put in the school building and all of a sudden we could turn it on, and 20% of the kids that weren't concentrating and couldn't focus, all of a sudden could concentrate and focus, well, I think we'd be having a conversation about how we could buy more and more of those machines. Well, I don't have the machine, but I had the program that I thought could probably accomplish a lot of this, and that was the PAWS program, realizing that one in five children in the classrooms were hungry. How could we fix that? I'd seen this model in other school systems, brought it to them, brought it to the Emergency Assistance Center, and that's where my contribution really ends. I kind of pushed the card out onto the track. This school system with an abundance of energy and enthusiasm and encouragement picked it up, put this program together, along with the Emergency Assistance Center with a lot of help from the PTA, and it took off. What it does is it gives 1,100 calories to these children on Friday afternoons. It doesn't feed them for the weekend, but it supplements them so that they have a better chance of coming back Monday morning, being ready to learn. Once again, we all win. When we started, we were looking at numbers of about $7 per kid per week to run the program. I'm also going to really thank Mark Bindus because he went to work on it, and he sourced all the food from his suppliers. Mark Bindus, for those of you that may not know him, is the food service director for the school system, and he sourced all the food through the people that we normally purchase our food from, and we got the cost down to about $3 per kid per week, which was just fabulous. It has allowed us to roll out at Bissell earlier than I thought we would be able to. It's been a wonderful synergy between the business community, between the Emergency Assistance Center, the school system, the PTA, and I also want to mention the Emergency Assistance Center because a lot of people ask me, well, they're in Northfield, what do they have to do with Twinsburg? They serve 800 people a month. It is a food pantry. It distributes food and clothing and hygiene items. I just want to share with you that out of that 800, about 300 of them are from Twinsburg. In fact, it's the largest population that they serve. I also want to share with you that the reason I partnered with them is the organization's completely transparent. It's a member of the Akron Canton Food Bank, and 90% of every dollar that is donated to them gets to the end user. That's exemplary. 10% goes for telephone, heat, that sort of thing, and the meager salaries of the dedicated staff that work there. It's important in that work with them and the PAWS program because every hungry kid, behind every hungry kid's a hungry family, and one of the synergies that are involved here is as we've identified the children that are in need, we are also able to get information about the Emergency Assistance Center of those families so that they may take advantage of some of the programs they offer. I will share with you, we started doing some fundraising. Pioneer, as I said, covered the entire month of February for us. In fact, they raised even more money and let us keep the excess from it. We did start, in fact, I don't believe I gave these to you last time. I'm going to distribute these to you in a minute. These are the magnets. You may see them around town. For those of you out here, they're $15. You can get them in the school offices at Wilcox or Bissell. It's $15 because roughly that's what we believe, or what we know to cover the cost for one child for one month. So if you want to sponsor a kid for one month, you get a magnet, and that's really a great thing. We've been involved, being present at the open houses at Wilcox and Bissell just to publicize the program and garner more public support. Six months ago, I would ask somebody if they knew about the PAWS program, and a lot of times they'd shake their heads, no, what is that? Something with the Humane Society? No, and explain what the program is. Now, if I ask, most of the time, yeah, I've heard about that, and that's a good thing. Word's getting out because we need to continue the momentum. This thing needs to be funded through the community, the businesses, the schools, the town. We can look at how wonderful Twinsburg is and, you know, the money that we can spend on the water park and fitness centers and the green space, and I think another thing that I'd really love to see in Twinsburg is ridding this town of hunger. I very much believe that a society should be judged on how it cares for the most vulnerable, and a little tiger at Wilcox who's hungry is pretty close to being the most vulnerable I can think of. I'm very proud of what we've been able to do. I'm very proud of what the school system has been able to do. I kid you not with the enthusiasm and support. I will share with you, we offered it to some other places, and we didn't get half the response that we got from Twinsburg, so I'm just very, very delighted with that. Present at the open houses, I had people coming up to me, learning about PAWS and hunger, but I also had several come up to me and say, oh, the PAWS program, and they'd lean, I've got my son signed up for it. Thank you. You have no idea what you're doing for us. And then I had a teacher at Wilcox that was talking to me about it, and we were talking, well, this is going to continue, right? And I said, well, we have to work on the funding, but that's the intention. She got this look on her face, and she said, no, this has to continue. This has to continue. I take that to heart. We have had, from the community, I would also share with you, just a couple of weeks ago, we were here at a township meeting, and Taste of Twinsburg made us the beneficiary of their program this year. They donated $5,000 to the PAWS program a few weeks ago, which has funded us for pretty much close to the rest of the year. Like I said, we have to build the momentum. We have to keep it going, but I think ultimately, we're going to succeed. We will eliminate hunger in Twinsburg, and that's something for all of us to be proud of. Once again, I thank you so much for the invitation back and your attention tonight. It's something that, as a Twinsburg resident with kids in the school system, I cannot tell you how proud I am of everyone and everything that has helped bring this to fruition. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stuber.
Board of Education, it is indeed a blessing to the school district that Mr. Noble had this idea, and from his idea, it has now grown into an amazing program that's servicing so many of our students at Wilcox and Bissell. And I do want to thank also the staffs at both of those schools because when we are short on community members who can pack bags, the teachers are giving up their time to do so on Wednesday afternoon so that the bags are packed and ready to go on Fridays, and then our staff is discreetly placing those bags of food items in backpacks so the kids have nutritious snacks over the weekend. I also want to publicly thank Cernas for the donation of all the produce. They have been extremely generous to the school district has. They've donated apples and carrots all last year and again this year, and again, that's thanks to Mr. Bindus's partnerships through our food service department. Mark's done a great job in making sure that he's holding down costs so that we can provide this very important program for our kids. So thank you, Mr. Noble. You are a blessing to us, and I appreciate our partnership with you, as well as Joyce Hunt and the Emergency Assistance Center, just great partners all the way around. So now, on to our kids, and I know, guys, you've been waiting a long time, so I do apologize for that, but we wanted to get to some other really good news. So we want to ask Mr. Asti to come forward and Ms. Villa to come forward, and Mr. Welker's going to help today, and Mrs. Davis is going to help with some pins. And I know Ms. Villa is very proud of her boys and girls, she has a lot to celebrate tonight, and for our community, if you haven't met Mr. Asti, he is our new assistant principal at Wilcox Primary School and has just jumped right on board and done some wonderful things. Did you want to read the names this evening? Okay, absolutely. And Mr. Welker's going to help with the certificates, and Mrs. Davis is going to pass out some nice pins to the boys and girls. So, boys and girls, when your name is called, come on up and shake hands with Ms. Villa and Mr. Asti. Get a pin from Mrs. Davis and shake her hand. Mr. Welker will give you a certificate, and then if you could, please stand in front of the table until all of your classmates and friends are up here from Wilcox so that we can take a nice photo opportunity for your moms and dads, okay? So beginning from Mrs. Burton's class, we have student Sophia Bretts. Sophia is an excellent role model in the classroom. She helps the other students and gets along well with her classmates. She works hard in all that she does and displays respect for her teachers and friends. She has a positive attitude each day and comes to school ready to learn. Next, from Mrs. Hannah's class, we have Neela O'Hara. Neela is a very helpful student in our class. She is always taking time to see if she needs help or if she can help other students or if they need her help. She always follows the classroom rules and directions. If something does happen, she is honest and tells the teacher right away. Neela is a great addition to Miss Hannah's classroom. Next, from Mrs. Lowe's class, we have Malaya McNutt. Malaya comes into class after the first, let me repeat that again, Malaya came into Miss Lowe's after the first day of school. She immediately fit right into the classroom routines. She quickly makes friends and is kind and helpful to everyone. She's a quiet worker and always follows classroom rules. Miss Lowe is very happy that Malaya joined her class this year. Next, from Mrs. DeCola's class, we have Dylan Fantone. Dylan has had a great start to this year. He listens to directions the first time they are given. Dylan is responsible, respectful, and caring. He is a great role model in Mrs. DeCola's classroom. Dylan, you rock. Next, from Mrs. Ayani's class, we have Tania Carter. Tania is a wonderful addition to Mrs. Ayani's classroom. Tania is a great leader and a role model. She follows the school and classroom rules and sets a good example for all. Mrs. Ayani loves having Tania in her classroom. Keep up the great work. Next, from Mrs. Jeskowitz's class, we have Matthew Ayani. Matthew is very respectful. He is a super listener. He follows the school rules. Matt has made many new friends, and he is always kind to everyone. Next up, from Mr. Hill's class, we have Ishan Tewari. Ishan is off to a wonderful start in first grade. He does an excellent job of listening to and following directions. Mr. Hill can always count on Ishan to be on task. Ishan is a friendly and helpful classmate with his peers. Great job, Ishan. Next, from Mrs. Ferillo's class, we have Gianna Vince. Gianna is a great student and excellent role model in Mrs. Ferillo's classroom. There is another student that has a broken arm, and Gianna is the first one to help her out and keep her organized. She participates in class and seems to love first grade. Great start of the school year, Gianna. Next, from Mrs. Kane's class, we have Kennedy Platic. Kennedy shows respect by being a fantastic friend to everyone. She shows caring by being helpful and kind to her classmates. She is responsible when she follows school rules the very first time. She tries her best in all of her daily work. She can be counted upon to do the right thing. Congratulations to Kennedy. Next, from Mrs. Fink's class, we have Emily Ma. Emily is a wonderful student. Emily was nominated for this award because she is a truly good citizen. She is very responsible and always willing to help other students in class. She is respectful not only with the teachers but also with her classmates. Emily, you rock. Next, from Miss Nysley's classroom, we have Morgan Mayfield. Morgan is a wonderful student who is ready to learn each day. She's a hard worker and a kind classmate. She always has her hand up and a big smile on her face. Mrs. Nysley... Mrs. Nysley is looking forward to watching Morgan grow academically this year. And then finally, last but not least, from Mrs. Browning's class, we have Brevin Ward. Brevin Ward is a joy to have in class. He is respectful, responsible, and caring to all. He is always willing to help his neighbor when asked. Mrs. Browning can really depend on him. He works very hard and gives his best every day. Congratulations to Brevin. Boys and girls, if you could hold your certificates up so that your moms and dads and your family can take a nice photo of you. Put it in, yeah, right in front of your chest. Congratulations, boys and girls. Let's give them another round of applause. Boys and girls, you may be seated. Boy, Wilcox does rock. They have a lot to celebrate tonight, for sure. Next up, I'd like to invite Mr. Holland and Mr. Hyam, our assistant principals from George G. Dodge Intermediate School, to come forward. Welcome, guys. Thanks for being here tonight. The students from George G. Dodge Intermediate School were selected from their Cub community. They stand out from other students with their outstanding leadership qualities, citizenship, academic performance and efforts, social skills, and overall accomplishments. We are very proud to announce the Cheetah Cub Students of the Month. So, we'll start with our fourth grade Students of the Month. And once again, boys and girls, when you come forward, please shake hands with Mr. Holland and Mr. Hyam and Mrs. Davis, who has a pin for you. And then Mr. Walker will give you your certificate. And if you could stay up here till all of the Dodge students are called, so we have a nice photo of you, we would appreciate that greatly. So, from fourth grade, we have Quincy Newsom. And next, we have Jessica Mason. Moving on to our fifth grade students, we have Ethan Creco. And on to our sixth graders, we have Vicki Lynn. Let's congratulate our George G. Dodge Students of the Month. All right, guys, if you want to just hold your certificates for a moment, because I see some of our family members would like to take a nice photo of you for your scrapbook Okay, thank you, boys and girls. Let's give them one more round of applause. Okay, you may be seated. This morning, we had a fabulous family event at George G. Dodge Intermediate School. It was the annual Father's Walk and I've just asked Mr. Hyam and Mr. Holland if they can just say a few words about the Father's Walk, what the purpose was of the Father's Walk and what it was like today over at Dodge.
Good evening. This morning, we had our sixth annual Father's Walk program at Dodge Intermediate School. We had probably the largest crowd that they've had since, in these six years, over 500 adults, you know, with their kids, probably over 1,000 packed into the gymnasium this morning. And we had a program, we had, actually, one of our presenters was Mr. Faggins. And our other presenter was Mr. Jim Reese, the principal of RBC. And the Father's Walk program is really just about giving a chance for fathers to show how much they really are involved and care about their child's education. So, a lot of the fathers either drove or walked their kids to school today. We did a symbolic walk around our track. We had a program, we've had treats for them for breakfast this morning. And it gave the fathers a chance to spend an extra hour in the building and in this program with their students. So, we love doing this. It's a huge crowd, it gets bigger and bigger every year, and we look forward to next year and seeing you there.
And finally, from Twinsburg High School this evening, Board of Education, we have a number of presenters. We have Mr. Alex Popovich and Mrs. Tanya Brennan and Mr. Matt Rukowski, who are here to talk to you a little bit about all the exciting things happening at Twinsburg High School.
Good evening, everyone, Board of Education. Thank you for having us tonight. Just some things we wanted to highlight that are going on this month at the high school or upcoming events that we should actually look forward to. And as Mr. Stuber alluded to, we did have three National Merit semifinals. We actually have another person receiving an award here in another week or so that we're waiting on so we can bring those four individuals next month in front of you. But, some things coming up and actually, they'll tie into number four on that list. But, our first thing that we're going to talk about tonight is we have the Dig Pink volleyball match event occurring this Tuesday, September 23rd. That is a home match. Coach Brennan, also, our volleyball coach and ninth, or excuse me, 10th grade guidance counselor, if there's anything you'd like to add real quick, you put a plug in here.
Absolutely. So, our Dig Pink event is our breast cancer awareness fundraiser. Last year, we raised over $3,000 for the event that we sent off to the Site Out Foundation. So, our goal this year is 4,000. We do have t-shirts for sale, we have raffle baskets, it's a very fun night, we do a lot of games. So, if you're free next Tuesday, the 23rd, we're playing Solon. So, we'd love to have you come out and join us and, you know, share in the pink experience.
Thank you, Coach. Kind of a follow-up from last board meeting that I presented with Mrs. Trapphegan on PBIS and how that's an initiative that our district's taken on more full-blown this year across each building. At the high school, we are bringing in a gentleman, we talked about it that day at the last board meeting, but we were able to confirm and book that for next Friday morning. We will be having an all-school assembly, we'll actually be splitting it into two grades, 9th and 10th grade will be hearing the speaker block one and 11th and 12th be hearing the speaker block two. But, Alex Simon, I'm trying, we're trying to kind of keep it as a big surprise to the kids, to some extent, of what he offers, but he has presented at a number of various schools. Some of his background, though, is he's an excellent percussionist that has actually performed on Stomp that was on Broadway. But, he brings in messages of anti-bullying, school pride, and just doing kind of, just what it means to be a good citizen and doing the right thing. And actually, he can adapt it for all levels. He's been at elementary buildings, he'd been at high schools, he's spoken at colleges. So, we're very excited to bring him in next Friday morning, September 26th. Moving on to that, as the ever busy, or ever approaching, I should say, dates of homecoming, although they're later this year, it feels like this year, we've got a little bit of a longer break being in mid-October. But, homecoming planning is underway. We have Spirit Week, prepping, rally, assembly, and the dance will be October 11th. The game is October 10th, that's a home game against Strongsville. Coach Brennan is the pep club advisor. Would you like to add anything on that? No, you're right. I know, more things are coming down the lines, but there's a lot planned and it's too much to probably sum up right exactly. But, one thing we did want to mention tonight is October 15th, National Assessment Day. What we did, you know, taking this on really truthfully last year for the first time under this model, and actually, we're adding what I think Mrs. Farthing's going to talk about tonight with Ready Step for the 9th grade. But, we are offering tests to the 9th, 10th, and 11th graders. It is a mandatory test, but it is offered at no cost, no additional cost to the parent. And what these tests can provide is a heck of a lot of college readiness and getting them prepared only to take those exams, which, you know, they will have to sign up for in the future. Now, I don't want to steal, excuse me, Ms. Brennan's and Mr. Rukowski's thunder on the next couple of slides, but one kind of note is if you do have a senior that day, they're the only grade that doesn't have to be in the building in the morning. And we're going to do what we usually do for the OGT testing and take a delayed start for seniors. They have plenty of other things, especially college applications, that they could take advantage of, maybe to work on, on those extra couple hours in the morning. And they'll never pass on an opportunity, maybe to sleep in. So, just kind of putting that date out there for parents, but those are some things that are upcoming at the high school for this month. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Brennan to talk about PSAT.
Okay, so, our PSAT is coming up on our National Assessment Day. It has been mandated that all 10th and 11th graders will be taking the PSAT that day. This, again, is at no cost to the students, it's in their academic fees. And the main reason that it is important that we start our kids younger and having them take these tests early on is because it is a proven fact that students who take the PSAT at 10th grade or younger score 189 points higher on their SAT when they actually get to that test. It's also great exposure for our students as a college readiness exam. Students, when they fill out the form for PSAT, they are completing a lot of information that is then sent off to universities, thousands of universities. So, automatically by them just taking the practice SAT, they are able to be seen by a lot of colleges. And then their data and information goes out to them and then they in turn, in return, receive that information from the colleges as well. So, it starts them on that process. National Merit Scholarship money can be won through the PSAT. That happens their junior year, so it is very beneficial for them to take it in 10th grade because they are getting that practice again and that exposure to the test. And what we tell our kids is, practice makes perfect, of course, so the more that they take it, the more that they practice, the better they know the exam and the better that they can actually do on that National Merit qualifier year, which is their junior year. AP potential identification is also determined while taking the PSAT. So, that is pretty important to us when we are scheduling students as counselors and teachers when they are looking at that, because it allows them data and resources to look at through their scores so that they can see what their strengths are, what their weaknesses are, and which AP programs would be best suited for them. So, that is actually a very good plus. And then My College Quick Start and Big Future Profile resources are available to them also, free of charge, through the College Board. But, when they do take the PSAT, it gives us a lot of good data that is then plugged into their profile. And all of our students at the high school do have a profile through College Board. That is happening either through Success Class or through guidance counselors as well. So, every student should have a Big Future and College Board, My College Quick Start account. And all of that information from the PSAT will then be readily available. So, them taking it in 10th grade is going to be very positive so that they have that data back and they can start prepping and looking at their strengths and their weaknesses. So, now I will turn it over to Mr. Rukowski to talk about ACT.
Good evening, everyone. This year at THS, at the high school, we're offering three ACT tests. September 13th, which was this last weekend, October 25th, next month, and June 13th. We're proposing that we do another test during the winter to provide our students the opportunity to take the test at the school they're most comfortable with. That's to be determined. We're hoping that ACT gives us that test. But, it's nice for our students to be able to come into our building and take the test. About 80% of the test takers this last weekend were. And so, it's nice for them to come into their own building, to go to their own classrooms, to see familiar faces and to feel comfortable. There's a lot of anxiety on test day, especially when it comes to college testing. So, it's nice to see our students in the building and to provide them the opportunity to see some familiar faces in familiar places. Scores are on the rise. In the data I saw this last year in the reporting period, the composite ACT score for about the 283 students that took the test was above 23, about 23.2. That's the first time it's been above 23 in the data that I saw. Last five years, it hovered around 21, 22, and this last year, it took a jump to 23. In comparison to about the 1.8 million people that took it in the state of Ohio, Twinsburg High School is above that composite score across the state of about 21. So, our kids are doing great on the test and again, we feel that giving them the opportunity here at the high school, you know, there's a lot of benefit to that. The first ACT test that happened this last weekend, it was a success. Much relief to me, it's my first time as the test supervisor. The staff that helped us out this last weekend, everyone did a great job. I'm very relieved that everything went well, but all the kids did a great job and we're very excited for the next couple of test dates and we're hoping that the winter date comes to fruition.
One final thing I'd probably add about that is, a lot of what parents and kind of students should think about is, whatever universities you start to look into, and sometimes, you know, when some of us were in high school, they said, "Always take both the ACT and SAT." There's a lot of colleges now that are starting to specify. I think actually what we found out from the data is that, you know, a lot of students taking the ACT were applying at Kent State. For the SAT, it was the Ohio State University. So, for those future Buckeyes out there, plug in, because it's my wife's school, so she'd want me to say that. But, you know, to think about, if you have a question of what university you're looking to apply for, I would obviously talk to your guidance counselor, your high school guidance counselor, because they're probably able to kind of pick up on that data if you're unsure. Some universities are very clear, this is what we want, this is, we want to see the ACT or we want to see the SAT. Others say, "We'll take a score from either to kind of determine things." So, again, those are just some of the aspects you have to look at when you're considering if your student is, you know, approaching that point where they have to start filling out college applications or they're juniors that are wanting to take the test and score, excuse me, score some results for their future applications, okay? And that concludes THS Building Highlights.
Thank you, Mr. Popovich and Ms. Brennan and Mr. Rukowski. Ms. Brennan's been here for a year now and Mr. Rukowski's brand-new to the high school and just doing some phenomenal things with our students, very impressive with what they do and how they do it. And of course, Mr. Popovich is all hands on deck, doing a lot of things administratively at Twinsburg High School. But, did you notice the theme, Board of Education? ACT's on the rise, test scores are on the rise, our data on the report cards on the rise, we are on the rise, and we are just so very, very pleased about the progress of our kids. So, it's a very good time here in the school district. Things are on the upswing and we're very proud of our students. Thank you.
A lot of very good news tonight, Mrs. Powers. Thank you very much. This is the point in the agenda where we pause and give the parents a chance to take their kiddies and go home, but I think they just did that. I don't know if, Mr. Popovich, you were the one who cleared the room, but thank you for your time tonight. We'll move on then to committee reports. I think we do have a curriculum. I'll turn things over to you.
The curriculum and technology meeting met Monday, September 8th at 6:00 PM, as usual start time. This meeting meets quarterly as a subcommittee of the Board of Education and consists of parents, teachers, community members, administrators, and Board of Education members, which would be Mr. Feldler and myself. And it's very exciting to be a part of, it's always a good crowd and very, always a very busy meeting. And there's always a good attendance and free chocolate, so, if you want to show up. During the meetings, evaluated and piloted materials are presented. And when these materials are voted on, they're then recommended to the Board of Education for final approval and implementation. And at this first meeting of the 2014-15 school year, we were introduced to Jen Farthing, who, if somebody didn't know her from the committee, somebody who's new. Also, she is the Director of Curriculum and Lori Slattery, who is retired Director of Instruction from Kent City Schools, and she's now our District Curriculum Supervisor. During this recent meeting, we also reviewed the continuous improvement plans, which are up for Board approval tonight, and those will- And those will soon be available online. And we're introduced to each building's principal and we got to hear their mission statements from each building. And there was also discussion about the preliminary results of the local report card or the Twinsburg City School District Local Report Card. And I believe you're going to present that, so that'll be exciting. And at the meeting, there were still debates at the, not at the meeting, but at, we understand that there's still debates going on at state level and Common Core, but the district is going to continue to move forward and implement the Common Core curriculum. And we have some, there was also some exciting news that was shared and that 100% of the students were promoted to fourth grade this past year and the third grade reading guarantee will continue. We're also awarded an ebook grant and we're reimbursed $26,000 for AP Chemistry books and for AP Statistic books. So that's good news. Our district is also participating in the GIR Grant for Math and Science for grades four through eight with the Smart Consortium. And this is in conjunction with the Nordonia Hill City School District. And this will be used for professional development and coaching opportunities for the teachers regarding teaching project-based learning. And speaking of coaching, the academic coaches hired by the district seem to already be making a positive impact on our students. And one parent attended the meeting and was just had nothing but good things to say about the program. And she was initially concerned about her son entering RBC for the first time as a new student and a little apprehensive about maybe getting some extra help. But he is utilizing the coaches and his, so far, has had a great start to the school year. And we've heard a few of these stories. And the coaches aren't just for, you don't necessarily have to be assigned a coaches. If you are, if a student is struggling a little bit in class or may have missed a concept during this day and didn't just quite grasp it, they can always go see a coach for extra help. So that's something that they should be taking advantage of if they feel necessary. And now to the high school French course. We have, the committee voted unanimously to recommend to the Board the approval of adoption of Discovering French, Blanc 2, Rouge 3 workbooks for the use of our, by use of our new French teacher, Marie Tanius. And also for approval is the workbook, I'm going to try to say it, but I never took French. Anybody help me out? Alons à delay. So that's the best I can do with that. The books mentioned provide enhanced communication and conversational skills. However, a bonus in using the Alons à delay is that it comes with a DVD and CD. And there's also an online component, so the books supplement online coursework. And our next meeting is going to be October 27th at 6:00. And if you're interested in joining this meeting, you can contact us. And you can also look on the curriculum homepage for contact information. And finally, the minutes and the PowerPoint presentation from the most recent meeting can be found on the curriculum homepage as well on the district website. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
I think you've got it all covered.
Yeah, she did really well. I'm also very happy to hear the positive feedback, especially coming from parents about the academic coaches. I know that was something that we talked a lot about last year. And you did a lot of work with the staff, Mrs. Powers. So I'm very happy, Tina, that you got some good feedback on that.
Definitely.
Anything else under committees, Robert, Tina? I do not. Before we move back to administrative reports, Mrs. Powers, I skipped over Agenda Item D. I think we do have one change to the agenda and I'll let Mr. Felber make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Stuber. As you can see, we're a little light tonight and we have three board members present. We do obviously have a quorum, so we're able to conduct business. But in Attachment I-3, which is the extracurricular contracts, I do have a professional relationship with one of the people that is up for approval. And normally in this situation, I would be abstaining. If I were to do that, that we would not be able to pass that whole section of the contract because we would only then have potentially two, two votes, assuming my colleagues would be voting positively. So I'm going to make a recommendation that the name of Michelle Wilmot be removed from this agenda and be placed on the October 1st agenda.
And that is a motion.
And that is a motion.
I'll second that motion and that is Exhibit I-3.
I-3, correct.
Okay. And I would ask for discussion, but I think you've already provided it. Mr. Aho, roll call, please. Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes 3-0 and Mrs. Powers will look forward to having her name put before us again at the next meeting. And thank you. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item F, Administrative Reports. I know, Mrs. Powers, you have Mrs. Farthing here with you and you have two really great reports to give tonight. So I'll let you kick it off.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stuber. As you know, the state of Ohio is placing an important emphasis on college and career readiness. And our local report card that was released last week had some new information about college and career readiness in our school district and that will continue to be enhanced as we move forward in time. This evening, Mrs. Farthing is going to provide some further information about our school district's college and career readiness plans. And then right from there, she's going to go right into the second report and that is an overall summary of the school district's local report card for the 2013-14 school year. Welcome, Jen.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education. A lot of my presentation has already either been alluded to or covered, so.
We'll see how we, quickly we can move through this. As Mrs. Powers said, we're going to talk about college and career readiness. I think you will continue to hear those terms put together all of the time now, moving forward. In August, we received our ACT results, as Mr. Popovich and Mr. Radkowski mentioned. And we were very pleased to see that our 2014 students moved above that 22 threshold and our average score in the district was a 23.2. So we were very pleased to see that. You can see the upward trend we've had, but getting over that 22 hump was really exciting for us to see that information. The majority of our students do take the ACT versus the SAT. But as Mr. Popovich said, you know, it depends on which university you plan to go to. But in general, our students take the ACT more often. By subject area, you can see our results, again, in the upward trend in all of our subject areas. Very pleased to see that. And if you can see, the rating jumped up to 23.7. Additionally, as you know, we are actively offer a lot of AP courses at the high school. And you will see the results. And again, numbers increasing, our number of AP students increased, the number of AP exams increased. We did have a decrease in the number of passing scores and the number of non-passing scores increased. And the reason that that happened is when we look at our results, this year we offered three courses for the first time. We received the grant from the Google Grant and the AP STEM Grant. And we recently offered AP Environmental Science. We offered AP Computer Science and we offered Chemistry, AP Chemistry. And those are classes we have not offered regularly on an ongoing basis. So if we look back across the time and I'll show, you'll see proof of this in a moment. When we first offer the class, our passage rate is typically low. Sometimes zero, sometimes one or two. But you can see that that, it takes time for the instructors to get used to it, to get used to the materials, the format of the test and those type of things. So to take that, you'll see right here that we had 100% passage rate in three courses, which was Calculus AB, Physics B, and Spanish Language and Culture. And all three of those courses are not brand new, but since I've been in the district, our number of AP offerings has increased greatly. And when we first offered the Calculus AB course, we had very, very, very few students pass. So you can see that over time, though, you can see what the teachers have done. And to get an average score of a 4.26 is incredible out of a scale of one to five. And I, well, I know what I would do. I wouldn't have signed up for that class. So you can see how over time that those scores have increased. And the thought of having all of our students passing those tests is incredible. And kudos to our teachers and students in those classes. And those are just the 100%. We had some also very high passage in others. So we know and part of, Mrs. Tringo and I have already talked about ways to work on improving those three scores for those other classes, just, you know, increased professional development, increased materials, different things that the teachers may need. We'd like to try to bring that coaching model in and have them visit some successful classrooms and then maybe have some of those teachers who have the successful classrooms come visit our class and give us some suggestions. So those are things we will be working on. As Mr. Popovich and the high school team mentioned, we are going to be participating in the National Day of Testing in the country. That day is October 15th, 2014. This year, for the first time, our eighth graders are going to be taking a test called Ready Step. Our ninth graders are also going to be taking Ready Step. In the future, our ninth graders won't necessarily take Ready Step, but because they did not have that opportunity last year, our eighth graders and ninth graders are going to be taking Ready Step. Ready Step is a program that belongs in the SAT family. So you'll see that the progression is typically Ready Step, PSAT, and then SAT. And as mentioned, the 10th graders and 11th graders will be taking the PSAT. You heard the different reasons, but we want to get those college and career readiness tests in front of the students as soon as we can. These are different than our normal assessments and our PARC assessments that are coming and our MAP test. This is different. It's, you know, totally geared on what they will see on the ACT or SAT. Ready Step is really, it's meant for us to get that data early so we can start helping our students prepare for college and career, whichever path they're going to go down. This will give us the data to start helping them make those decisions a little earlier. Ready Step, again, is related to the PSAT and the National Merit Test. And it will be measuring reading, writing, and math skills. And it is approximately a two-hour test. It is all multiple choice. So as I said, this is not a PARC-like test, but when the students take the ACT and SAT, they're not going to see a PARC-like test either. It's going to be very much multiple choice. You know, they are starting to bring short answer into those tests and essays, but this product is strictly a multiple choice test. So the students will take a reading, a writing, and a math section. And as you can see, part of the math section has calculator questions and then questions that don't have calculator use. And that is similar to the PARC assessments because there will be questions that have calculator use and some that do not have calculator options. Again, this is to prepare our students to be college-ready and to give us, starting to help the students get their scholarships and preparing for the SAT. And the reason we started doing this and are looking ahead is because the Ohio Department of Education has said that all students will be taking a college and career readiness test. So as we start talking about the graduation requirements for the students that are freshmen now, they will be taking this assessment. It's not been named yet. It's most likely, it's going to be the ACT or SAT, most likely, but it hasn't been named yet. But it, last year it was named and it was going to be the SAT. So that's why we moved with the direction of Ready Step. But with the graduation requirements, again, we'll talk about this one. It becomes a little more set in stone. But one of the things that the students will have to do is take this and receive a passing score on it. And the goal is to enter college or career remediation-free. And this assessment will be used in conjunction with end-of-course exams that are coming. We have a partnership with Summit Education Initiative, or SEI are the initials. And SEI is, they love to data mine and they will be taking our results and working with it and, you know, doing some longitudinal studies. And they were very, they will also provide some ACT data for us. So they just, that's what they love to do. And they want to know how successful students in Summit County are. So we are happy for that partnership. And they will be actually providing the Ready Step assessment to our students. It's free of charge to us and then they will be helping us and work with the data. Do you have any questions about the college and career readiness and the National Day of Testing?
Do they start the testing a little bit later in the morning on those days than the general start time?
I have, Mr. Reese and I and Mr. King met today, this afternoon. And they're going to try to do it during periods one, two, and three, that the students will report to period one and they will take the test and they will just stay in that period and do the test at that point in time.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome. Information about this is being discussed tonight. It's also on the district homepage. It's on the RBC and high school websites. And also, we talked about that Mr. Reese will do a Blackboard Connect call closer to that point in time so parents are aware of what is going on. Okay, jumping right ahead to some more, to some good news. And I know everybody has alluded to this already, so I'll hopefully make this brief for you. And we're very, very excited about our scores on the local report card. Yes, we were doing the happy dance at the board office. Just very excited about the hard work of our students and teachers and what results we have. The report card components changed up to last week. We were, we, we thought the K-3 literacy was going to be on the report card and the ODE determined to take that off because there were some questions about reporting. So that is not going to be discussed tonight. Again, our components are the achievement, our graduation rate, gap closing, our value-added or progress. And then Prepared for Success is report-only and then the K-3 literacy is delayed. This slide you saw previously, our performance index and our indicators met for the achievement component. But the really awesome news, as Mrs. Powers said, was we are tied at number 67 in the state for our performance index of our highest score ever of a 106.651. And that is an increase from a 100, from the 101st school last year up to the 67th. So very pleased with those results. Our graduation rate, our four-year and five-year cohort are both at an A. And the four-year cohort was an increase of two points over last year. And then our five-year cohort remained the same. And as we discussed previously, our gap closing is, was previously called AYP, Adequate Yearly Progress. And now it is AMO, Annual Measurable Objectives. And it is, our gap closing is another way to describe that. Again, those targets increase every year by about 2%. So our reading score that we're shooting for this year is an 84.9 and our math score is an 80.5. And you can see that overall in the district, we received a B. And just to reiterate, and if families haven't watched the board meeting previously, we did have a demotion because of our students with disabilities received a 60.6 and we had to get a target score of at least a 70 to not have a demotion. So that is why we went down to a B. And last year, we did also receive a B in the gap closing. This is the new slide here, our value-added, very excited about this. You can see across the board that district-wide, we received an A. Overall, we received an A for our gifted. And then also our lowest 20th percent, which is the lowest quintile of students, we earned a C. And our students with disabilities, we earned a C. And both of those were from some very hard work of our teaching staff and administrators to raise those scores from an F the previous year to a C. And we know that we will continue to work on that. And as Mrs. Davis mentioned, we have our continuous improvement plans being voted on tonight. And those are items that we know are our areas of concern and that those are going to be our areas of focus this year. Value-added, we increased by approximately, we jumped up 100 schools. Last year, we were at 173 and this year we jumped up to the 72nd. So that just was another thing to do a happy dance about. We were very excited about that. Just great growth by our students. Lot of hard work went into getting that and we're very pleased with those results. And again, getting the value-added, third in the state is phenomenal. Just, we are so, 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 so excited about that. And then this, this Prepared for Success, we had not seen what this was going to look like before. We knew that it was going to be report-only. But, so we received a score for our ACT participation, ACT remediation-free. Same with the SAT, Honors Diploma. We had approximately 31% of our students graduate with an Honors Diploma. These are the students who entered ninth grade in 2010. So they are grouped together as a cohort and this would be the students graduating in the four-year graduation rate. Industry-recognized credential, those are our students that attend CBCC and graduate with some type of certificate, whether it's an HVAC or plumbing or a computer programming. ACT, I'm sorry, AP Placement Test, 35% of our students took those. And scores with the three or better was a 78.5. And then Dual Credit Enrollment was 8.2%. And we are just growing that program. As you know, we've come to the Board of Education with physics class and then this year with the Spanish class. So we're just starting to grow that. And we're also investigating International Baccalaureate because that will be report-only next year also. next year also, so that's something we administratively are looking at this year. So I would just like to celebrate our success and say thank you to the parents and the students and the teachers for a job well done. And again, talking about, we know what our areas are, and we have our CIP in place, which was discussed at the meeting, pretty detailed, so we know where we're heading and where we're going this year.
Mrs. Farthing, I think, I know, after all these years, how you work and Mrs. Powers and Mrs. Trappagen and the rest of the staff, I know that you guys, while we're celebrating this behind the scenes, you guys are focused on the areas where we're still deficient, and I just want to acknowledge that you guys don't rest. We're celebrating the success, and we should, but I know that behind the scenes, you guys are deep into it at your desk, trying to figure out how to bring everything else back up. We had this discussion last year, and if you look at some of the scores that we had last year, they've gone up, you know, and there's only one really bad one up there right now, and I know you're focused on it. But the other thing I was going to say was, I hope that, as a board, some of the additional resources that we have supported, the educational environment, that you guys have come back to us and said, "Look, some of these areas that are deficient, we need to do X, Y, and Z," and we've supported you in that, and I think we're starting to see progress, and Tina even mentioned, there's a parent who is recognizing those changes. So I would just ask that, Mrs. Powers, you, Mrs. Farthing, Mrs. Trappagen, and the rest of the staff, as you guys look at this stuff, you know, if we have to spend a dollar in this district, I want that discussion to be about students and education, and I know Tina and Rob would be right there, and so would Kate and Kathy. So keep up the great work, and the reason that there was so much already discussed about your reports tonight is because it's such great news, everybody just has to jump in and take a part of that.
Right, we all want to talk about it.
I, I think it's just a reflection, Jen, of the hard work that you and the rest of your team and everybody that supports the academic environment here. Just congratulations to you. Keep up the good work. I know you're not done yet. I know you're not going to rest, but take a moment to reflect on the good work that you have done, and I think Mrs. Powers said it right. We're looking at things rising, they're continuing to rise, and I just want to publicly say, on behalf of the board, thank you very much for all of your hard work, and I'll stop for a second and let you guys jump in.
I just want to see the viral video of the happy dance.
Exactly. I think that video camera wasn't working that day. But thank you for your support, Board of Education. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Powers, anything else under administrative reports tonight?
Not this evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is remonstrance, our policy and procedures are that people who wish to address the board do so by spinning a blue card. I do not have any. Mr. Aho, do you have any tonight? Seeing none, we will move forward in the agenda. First on the agenda here for board action is under the Treasurers Report. We have four items, and before we move into those, Mr. Aho, I'll give you an opportunity to speak. I know we have our annual look at appropriations tonight.
Correct. Yeah, the other, the other three resolutions are the minutes, the financial report and check register, which we see those every month, pretty much, but the fourth one is the appropriations. The appropriations are all part of the budgetary process that's in place so that we don't overspend what we have. That's very important. All political subdivisions cannot spend more than they have. That's against, you know, that's the revised code. The only people that can spend more than they have is the federal government, so, you know, every, every city, township, library, school district has to live within their budget. So the appropriations are set to cover expenditures for the year, plus the incomferences that we have, and the incomferences basically are open purchase orders. Along with the purchase orders open for specific purchases, we can also open some blanket purchase orders, and those we use for some of the larger recurring type of purchases, like, you know, gas, utilities, electric water, some services like nursing services, custodial maintenance expenses, where you go out every month and are buying the same type of product over and over again. Those are, you know, I set it an amount to cover the expenditures without having to do a purchase order every time you want to buy a pack of paper or something. Of course, every year, the auditors come in and they remind us that it's against the higher revised code to make a purchase without a purchase order, so we have to have that process going through. Everybody has to kind of plan ahead. If you need to purchase something, you need to do your requisitions in the buildings. Those come over to my office, and they're turned into purchase orders, and then I sign off, I sign off on them. So there has to be, you know, funds available for the purchase orders. If there's not funds available, then they usually get kicked out. On occasion, if someone's doing a project and it's like, you know, "We need to buy X, Y, and Z, and we're going to sell them to generate the money," so we can, you know, kind of work on that a little bit with some of the fundraisers. The one thing about appropriations, they're really kind of the umbrella, the overarching umbrella for expenditures. The expenditures and comferences have to fit under our appropriations, so that's kind of the upper limit. Expenditures and appropriations cannot exceed our, our expenditures and comferences cannot exceed our appropriations without express authorization by the board. And then, you know, it's also, we're able to amend our appropriations throughout the year. If something should come up, where we get like a new grant or something, or if the grants change substantially, we will amend those throughout the year, but typically, we'd kind of wait till the end of the year. They don't really change all that much. Usually, at the beginning of the year, everything's pretty set, the grants are in place, and most all the revenues and expenditures are pretty, pretty well set. Also, two part of the process is, the beginning of the year, we do our budget hearing with, and then that document goes to the county, comes back to us in the form of a certificate of estimated resources. Now, the estimated resources, that's the county telling us what they believe our revenues are going to be from property taxes. So that's really kind of what we have to work with then. We have the property taxes, some state funding, and any kind of extra balances that we have. And then, we have to watch that for every account. We watch that for all our student activity accounts, all our athletic accounts, you know, and of course, our food service and PI funds and general fund. So we have all that on the form, and that really is like the, you know, the amount that we can't overspend. That's really kind of the whole process there. It's kind of a year-long process. We kind of, you know, stay with it all year long, you know, and then basically, the bottom line is that you don't spend money that you don't have. You have to watch it, and that's part of the process. This is the appropriations to start a year. You know, it has the, the dollars are appropriated for our payroll, which is, of course, the largest expenditure, and then the retirement and benefits. Then there's also, we have our materials, our purchased supplies, and those kind of items, and it kind of follows the same setup as the five-year forecast on the, on the object codes and all that kind of line out and the way it's set up. So here's our appropriations, and then that's just kind of the process, and that's why we go through this every year, so that we stay on top of what we have anticipated for our expenditures.
And just to highlight the, the big dollars, it's the total appropriations for 2015 that you sent to us, not including the carryover from the previous year, totals for the general expenses, forty-three point three million, and about eighty-four percent of that, which is about thirty-six-plus million, are the salaries and benefits.
Correct.
Which is pretty typical. Okay. Thank you for that. Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Without objection from my colleagues, I will bring agenda items H1, 2, 3, and 4 together in Consent Agenda. Item H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, the regular meeting, September 3, 2014, which was sent to the board under separate cover. Item H2, that the Board of Education accepts the following financial report for the month of July 2014, the bank reconciliation, the general fund financial summary report, and the financial report by fund. H3, that the Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of July 2014. The total, including payroll, is three million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventeen cents. And item H4, that the Board of Education of the Twinsburg City School District, Summit County, Ohio, that to provide for the current expenses and other expenses of said Board of Education during the fiscal year ending June 2015, the following sums be and are the same, are hereby set aside and appropriated for the several purposes for which expenditures are to be made, and during said fiscal year, upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, as sent forth to the board under separate cover. Is there a motion for these four agenda items?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Davis. A second?
Second.
Mr. Felber. Any other discussion on these items? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. And those items pass three oh. Next, under Personnel, action items, Agenda I. Without objection, I will read together items I, 2, and 3. Item I1, resolve that the Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I1, as per the date's terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Item I2, that the Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I2, as per the date's terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And item I3, that the Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I3, as per the date's terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. A motion for these three agenda items, please.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Felber. A second?
Second.
Ms. Davis? Under Discussion, I'd just like to highlight that in I1, just a welcome to intervention specialist Rebecca Williams at RBC. She's being brought in as a one-year contract replacing Mariana Domino, who retired. And also, under item I2, just a recognition of a retirement, Valerie Manzo, who was an instructional assistant at Wilcox. Any other items here? Roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. And those items pass three oh. Next, we will move to action items under New Business. This is Agenda Item J. Without objection, I will read together items J1 through J7. J1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following administrators as credentialed evaluators for the purpose of the Ohio Principal Evaluation System, OPEZ, and also, and/or the Ohio Teacher Evaluation, OTES. Those administrators are listed in the agenda under J1. Item J2, that the Board of Education approves the attached listing of items to be deleted from inventory as per the attached exhibit J2. Item J3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the Continuous Improvement Plans, CIP, for the district and for the Twinsburg High School, RB Chamberlain Middle School, George G. Dodge Intermediate School, Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and Wilcox Primary School, as recommended by the District Curriculum and Technology Committee, which met on September 8, 2014, and was sent to the board under separate cover. Item J4, that the Board of Education approves the purchase of discovering French Blanc II and Rouge III workbooks for the instruction of French II and III at the Twinsburg High School. The proposal is for four hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. The adoption was approved at the Curriculum and Technology Meeting that was held on September 8, 2014, and was sent to the board under separate cover. This is a consumable expenditure, is encompassed by the collection of student fees. Item J5, that the Board of Education approves an inter-district service area contract with the Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County for a teacher of the visually impaired. This will be for seventy hours at a rate of ninety-one dollars and fifty cents per hour, totaling six thousand, four hundred and five dollars. This was sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. Item J6, a resolution to direct the execution of a settlement agreement and release. It resolved that the Board of Education of Twinsburg City School District approves the settlement agreement and release that was attached heretofore in Exhibit A. And lastly, item J7, that the Board of Education approves the Twinsburg High School senior Sydney Austin to exercise Board of Education Policy 5111, which is the optional tuition-free education, paragraph F, and remain a student at Twinsburg High School through the end of the 2014-2015 school year. Is there a motion for these seven agenda items, please?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Davis. A second?
Second.
Mr. Felber? Any discussion on any of these items? Any clarifications from our administrators? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. And those items pass three zero. Item J8, the Board of Education adopts and purchases Alainz Ah-Dula textbook by Pearson for the French IV course offered at Twinsburg High School. I never took French. The proposal is for three textbooks totaling two hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-four cents. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum and Technology Committee on September 8, 2014, was sent to the board under separate cover. This is a permanent improvement expenditure. A motion for this agenda item, please.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Felber. A second?
Second.
Ms. Davis? Any discussion on this curriculum item? I think you already covered it.
No, not anymore.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. And that agenda item, J8, is approved three oh. We now have two remaining items under Agenda Item J. These are resolutions. Without objection, I will summarize both J9 and J10 as Consent Agenda, and then during discussion, we will discuss the purpose of these resolutions. The first is J9, a resolution authorizing CCG Energy Solutions to submit to the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, on the school district's behalf, a request for approval to participate in the School Energy Conservation Financing Program, also known as House Bill 264. Item J10 is a resolution authorizing School Energy Conservation Financing Program, House Bill 264 Project, and approving the agreement with CCC Energy Solutions, Inc. Is there a motion for these two agenda items?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Davis?
Second.
Second by Mr. Felber. The full resolution is printed in the agenda. I summarized the motions, and during discussion, I thought it would be appropriate if our administrators could provide a little bit of background to these. We saw the resolution at the last meeting, actually, it was in August.
August 20.
To authorize CCG to submit to the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. The first resolution, J9, is a revision of that proposal, and then the second item is a resolution, J10, that authorizes the superintendent to execute and sign the agreement. So as a summary, that's what we're looking at. Mrs. Powers, Mr. Welker, I'll let you guys fill in the blanks.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Stuber. This has been a work in progress. As you know, the board previously, on August 20th, approved the initial resolution. When the information was sent to the OSF, OSFCC, they found it to have some concerns and actually asked us to rework some of the numbers financially for the project at RBC. So Mr. Welker has been working very diligently with Mr. Wagner from CCG, and this is the result of that work. Moving forward, we know that the boilers at, at Wilcox are in the need of repair, so we are very interested in moving this along, and Mr. Welker will provide a little bit more information about the retrofit and some more specifics about that project. Jen?
Sure. So, so as you know, at our August 20th board meeting, we, we approved the initial resolution, sending initial project down to OFCC. After their review, it was found that certain operational and maintenance energy savings could not be counted towards the project, and so we wound up reworking the project. CCG Energy worked very diligently at refining the project, and they made adjustments to our boiler renovation project that, one, meet the needs of the House Bill tenants, and two, fit the needs of our district moving forward at RB Chamberlain. So this project was submitted to contingent on board approval at this Wednesday's meeting, and then there's the two resolutions that need your approval. One, one is J9 that approves us sending the project to OFCC so that they can officially approve the project, and then J10 is approving the contract and the financing after OFCC approves the project. So, so those are the two resolutions in front of you today.
So, we under, we understand, obviously, this is, you know, safe, warm, and dry, and those boilers predate most of us, you know, in, in, I think, what, nineteen fifties?
Yeah, yeah, so, so the...
We're looking at a high, a better high-energy replacement for the original boilers.
Yeah, so, so this, this project will still replace the two, two original boilers from the nineteen fifties, replace it with one boiler that basically can ha, or it can handle the entire load of, of RB Chamberlain, and then we'll be utilizing our, our newest boiler of, of the three as, as a backup boiler, so that's, that's the modified project that we would be undertaking for this, for this winter or fall. The other pieces of the project that were included in that August twentieth resolution still stand in the same, same capacity as we had it before.
And I think after I talked with you, Mr. Welker, about this, it's, it's fair to say that the, while the original project still was a valid project to pursue, there was a component of that project, a particular boiler that wasn't as old, that when replaced, simply didn't provide the bang for the buck from a project perspective, and mathematically then, when the Ohio Commission looked at that, they just didn't see the numbers the way they were, so we removed that piece from the project, which then mathematically causes the project to fall within their guidelines or requirements.
Correct.
To us, then, what we see is that we are able to continue with the project, and actually with less cost, because we're actually removing a component of the project, but still getting the things done that most need to be done.
Correct, correct.
Okay, I think the other thing that I think it's important to note is that in the discussions that the board members had, not just myself, but other board members with the staff and with Mr. Welker, we talked a lot about, the word risk came up, you know, the risk of doing something, the risk of not doing something, the value of the project, and I'm very comfortable with the recommendations and the work that was done by yourself, Mr. Welker, and everybody else, and Dean that was involved, just thank you to everybody for their input to help us keep this project moving forward, and to be creative in your thought process that when the Ohio Commission said, "Oh, wait a minute, you didn't just lay down, you picked it up and you worked with Mr. Wagner and you found a better solution," so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on these items, then? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. Those two items pass three oh, and I guess just the last thing on that is even though Kate and Kathy are not here tonight, they were involved as committee members in the discussion with Chad and with Mrs. Powers and Mr. Aho as well, so all five board members have had an opportunity to weigh in on this decision, so I think, I think we're solid with this, and I hope that we can move forward if the Ohio Commission will approve that, so, thank you. We're down to item J, which is, actually, that's not J, I think we just did J, miscellaneous is next on the agenda, is there anything that Tina or Rob, you have for miscellaneous tonight?
No, not this evening.
Mrs. Powers or Mr. Welker, anything?
Not this evening, thank you.
Mr. Aho?
No.
Very good, there is need for an executive session this evening, I will make the motion that the board enters executive session at eight thirty-five PM, to consider the employment of public employee as per Board of Education Policy zero one six six A, and to consider the purchase of property under Board of Education Policy zero one six six C, is there a second for this, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Felber, there is no planned action to be taken after this executive session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion passes three oh, thanks for coming tonight, we will now move to executive session.